Meeting with the Water Controlity Commission for improvements to Regulation 72 at their triennial review informational meeting. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Great, thank you. And I just have a couple of things I just want to say to the Public Works Department. Huge kudos for this last week. And Danny Smith is here, our roads manager, and you've just got to be exhausted, but thank you. This was a hit of all hits for us, and the roads got cleaned up. I know we had a couple citizens with some comments, but really appreciate all your hard work, and certainly for responding quickly to those that had those needs. Really appreciate that. And second, just to keep everyone posted on our RTD proposed legislation, we've heard from, I believe it's the Speaker's attorneys who are helping us draft the final bill that will be possibly going to committee. So we should hear sometime this week whether we are going to introduce that bill, or Kim Ransome will introduce that bill on our behalf, and whether that will go to committee. So we're moving forward with the RTD exodus. It's obviously going to be slow, but we're moving forward on it. So we'll keep you posted on that. All right, with nothing else, we'll move on to the consent agenda. Consent agenda items are considered to be routine and will be enacted by one motion and one vote. There will be no separate discussion on consent agenda items unless council votes to remove an item. Ordinances on the consent agenda are for introduction and will only be removed for discussion. Consent agenda items discussed at study sessions can be reviewed by clicking the agenda online. So council, you have, let's see, a total of four items, A and B, 1 through 3. So I will entertain a motion or any comments?
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve the consent agenda items A and B, 1 through 3.
Thank you.
My second.
Great. It's been moved by Councilmember Diak, seconded by Councilmember Hendricks. When prompted for your vote. And the consent agenda passes unanimously. Item number five is public hearing. We have two items on for public hearing. I need to get some advice from Mr. Maloney on how to introduce number A on Upland. Can I introduce the resolution and the ordinance at the same time? Or do we need to handle those as separate items for Com Park Boulevard?
So we're going to handle them both as a part of one public hearing, so you can introduce both the resolution of eligibility as well as the ordinance for annexation.
Okay, fantastic. And then we'll take two separate votes on A1 and A2.
That is correct.
Thank you. All right, so on public hearing tonight is Com Park Boulevard at Upland Drive annexation. We have Resolution Number 21-016, a resolution to establish the findings of fact and conclusion thereon concerning the eligibility of the town Com Park Boulevard at Upland Drive property for annexation. And we also have an ordinance, Number 2.275, on second reading, a bill for an ordinance approving and accomplishing the annexation of contiguous unincorporated territory known as the Com Park Boulevard at Upland Drive property in Douglas County. Ms. McCain, I think you're leading us through this?
I am, thank you.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, and good evening, Mayor and Council. So again, this is the public hearing to consider the annexation of a portion of the Com Park Boulevard at Upland Drive right-of-way. This right-of-way is 1.4 acres in size, currently located in unincorporated Douglas County, and located in the Com Park Village Plan Development in the northwestern area of town. Prior actions for this annexation process include, on February 1st, 2021, town council set the public hearing date for the Com Park Boulevard right-of-way annexation petition for March 15th, 2021. On March 1st, 2021, council approved the first reading of the Com Park Boulevard at Upland Drive annexation on the consent agenda. And then, public notice for the March 15th, 2021, public hearing which has been continued to today of the annexation was published in the Douglas County News Press, and all other public noticing procedures have been completed in accordance with state statute. The right-of-way shown on the map is outlined in orange. So by way of background, in 2018, the town annexed the private property immediately north of this Com Park Boulevard right-of-way, which included all of the Upland Drive right-of-way. And Upland Drive's been maintained by the town since its annexation. Upland Drive is labeled on that blue line to the left and right above Com Park Boulevard in the orange. So town snow plowing and roadway maintenance of the annexed portion of Upland Drive requires access through this section of Com Park Boulevard, which has necessitated this annexation this evening. In November of 2019, Douglas County actually deeded the Com Park Boulevard property to the town. However, the property remains located in unincorporated Douglas County. This annexation will accomplish bringing the property into the town boundaries. This proposal meets all statutory requirements for annexation into Parker and is consistent with the Parker 2035 Master Plan for Growth and Development. And lastly, this action is considered routine, what sometimes Public Works Engineering calls cleanup, to ensure that our town-owned properties are located within our municipal boundaries. In conclusion, the Com Park Boulevard at Upland Drive right-of-way is currently owned and maintained by the town. This annexation will bring this unincorporated roadway segment into the town boundaries. The roadway is contiguous to the town, meeting the statutory requirements for annexation, and is consistent, again, with the 2035 Master Plan. With that, staff recommends approval of Resolution Number 21-016 and ordinance Number 2.275 for the Com Park Boulevard at Upland Drive right-of-way annexation. And that concludes staff's presentation. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer. And I also have my colleagues from Public Works Engineering. I've got Danny Smith in the audience here, and Chris Hudson is also on Zoom to help answer any questions.
And obviously, we don't have an applicant on this.
We do not. The town is the applicant.
Very cool. All right, fantastic. So council, any questions on Resolution 21-016 or ordinance 2.275? And I'll start to my left with Councilmember Diak.
No, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
Great. Councilmember Hefta?
No, just going over again, I didn't see a cost in there. If you could just give us a cost on this.
Sure, I'm gonna defer to Danny. I think he's prepared. So Danny, you want to step up to the microphone? Thank you.
Good evening. Beyond routine maintenance costs, we do not anticipate or envision any other cost. We currently plow that section through an IGA with Douglas County. So again, beyond just routine maintenance, no additional costs anticipated.
Thank you.
Great. Councilmember Pogue?
I think you all have done a good job of representing this in study session.
Excellent.
Thank you.
Councilmember Hendricks?
I concur. Thank you. No questions.
All right, if there's no other questions on the council, we will open the public hearing for this at 7:32. And again, this is on Resolution Number 21-016 and/or ordinance 2.275. Danette, do we have anyone?
No, there are no public comments.
Okay, then we will close public comments at 7:32. And council, any further questions or comments?
No, Mr. Mayor, I move to approve Resolution Number 21-016 and ordinance Number 2.275.
Okay, so let's do one at a time. I have a motion by Cheryl on Resolution Number 21-016. A second?
A second.
Okay, second. It's been moved by Councilmember Pogue, seconded by Councilmember Hendricks, and we will go to a vote on Resolution Number 21-016.
That's it, we're going to handle this together.
Yep, one and a two. The public comment, but not the vote.
Yep.
Are you giving a voting train on Resolution?
Resolution 20, say it again, Chris.
On Resolution 21-016, are you giving a voting train?
I voted. Yeah, I voted.
Yep, everybody got.
There you go.
And the resolution passes unanimously. Ordinance Number 20, I'm sorry, ordinance 2.275. Cheryl, I'm going to keep your motion on the table for that. Is there a second?
Oh, second.
And seconded by Councilmember Hendricks. When the vote comes up. Item number B, ordinance Number 1.547.1, second reading, a bill for an ordinance to adopt the 2021 revised budget for the town of Parker and to make appropriations for the same. Rhonda Willie is up for this one.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. This ordinance is to revise the 2021 annual budget. The revision covers two categories of adjustments. The first is carryovers, which are reappropriation of unspent budget from the prior year to the current year for projects that were not finished and under contract of the previous year and cover multiple years. The majority of carryovers in this category are in the Public Improvements Fund and the Stormwater Fund. Some examples of these are the cottonwood widening for $9.8 million, street reconstruction projects for $2.2 million, and the Green Acres Tributary at Com Park Village South for $4.9 million. The other category of adjustments are amendments, and these are additional or new requests that were not anticipated at the time of the original budget presentation. The full detail of the carryover and supplemental items are in Exhibit A in the ordinance. Net revision is as follows. General fund is $106,500 of supplemental, $1,065,090 of carryover funds, for a total of The Parks and Recreation Fund has $93,696 of supplemental, $1,451,602 of carryover, and with a total of $1,545,298. The Cultural Fund has $49,647 of carryover. The Recreation Fund is actually a deduction of $24,696, and that's a supplemental. Public Improvements Fund is $20,534,436 of carryover. Stormwater Fund is $5,350,647 of carryover. And the Facility Service Fund is $53,000 of carryover. So the grand total of the net revision is $175,500 of supplemental, and carryover is $28,504,422, for a total revision of $28,679,922. And with that, I'll take any questions or comments if you have any.
Great, thanks, Rhonda. Councilmember Hendricks, any questions? Councilmember Pogue?
Yes. It's a significant amount of carryover. Can you identify categories?
I think your microphone is off, Cheryl. I think your microphone is off.
Oh. Yeah, sorry about that. I was asking, it's a significant amount of carryover.
Yes.
What categories does that come from, and where is it going?
The majority of them are in the Public Improvements Funds and the Stormwater Fund. So $20 million is in the Public Improvement Fund, and majority of that are the big construction projects that last multiple years. So the examples that I gave were the cottonwood widening, there's the street reconstruction projects, Parker Road sidewalk project for about $2 million, the Main Street Safety Circulation $1.3 million. The full list is in the ordinance. And so that's $20,534,436 in the Public Improvements Fund. And the Stormwater Fund has $5,350,647, which 4.9 of that is the Green Acres Tributary. So all of them are capital of what I just listed.
However, like with Cottonwood Bridge carryover.
Yes.
We are still on the hook for that amount of money, right?
The contracts were signed.
The contracts are still there.
Yes.
So in other words, you're carrying over the contracted amount?
We're carrying over the remaining amount that hasn't been spent from the previous years. It's money that was already in the previous year's budget.
It was in the previous year's budget. I'm asking why it wasn't spent. Was it due to COVID? Was it due to incomplete contracts? What were the reasons?
The majority of them are incomplete contracts because they're the multi-year projects, the big street construction projects.
Okay.
And Rhonda, just for, just for a print reference, when a project is a multi-year project, we approve that budget in the, so the 2020 year.
Yes.
And then the residual, whatever's remaining on the contract, we pull the 21, and then if it's another year, we pull, so it decrements, but all three of those years end up to be the cost of the project.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, and it's just how we're terming it as carryover.
Right, and that's the government accounting.
It's carried over from the prior year.
Yep. Okay. Councilmember Diak?
No, I have no questions. I mean, to me, this is a typical process that we've gone through, at least in my time here. And it'd be great if contractors and projects can be done from January 1st to December 31st, but that's just not the case. So, you know, from a process standpoint, it's already been approved, it's already ongoing, we have contracts in place. You have to carry it over, and once that becomes final, if there's any additional funding or surpluses, well, then we address it at that point in time, and it gets, I guess, swept back into another fund, or it just doesn't get allocated. So, you know, I mean, this is a pretty standard type of situation. Thank you.
Okay. Councilmember Hefta?
I just want to thank Rhonda and her team for the budget revisions, and also explaining to us how this is carried over and the amendments as well. Because these multi-year projects carry on from year to year, and the different type of funds that you explained was helpful for everyone. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Great, if there's, anybody have another? Okay, another round. If there are none, we will open the public hearing on this at 7, I'm sorry, public comment on this at 7:41. Danette, do we have anyone?
If there is anyone on Zoom who'd like to comment, please raise your hand. No comments.
Great, and we will close it at 7:41. And council, any further comments, questions? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
I move to approve ordinance Number 1.547.1 on second reading.
Second.
Great. The motion was made by Councilmember Hefta, seconded by Councilmember Diak. When the voting comes up, please cast your vote.
Sometimes you sound like a game show host. Come on down.
Come on down. All right, and the ordinance passes unanimously. Thank you. Moving on to item number six, we have six, I believe, yeah, six ordinances for tonight. First one up is ordinance Number 9.136.4 on second reading. This was continued from February 16th, 2021, and there is a recommendation to move this to April 19th, 2021. So I will entertain a motion to that effect.
So moved.
Diak?
A second.
Hendricks, it's been moved by Councilmember Diak, seconded by Councilmember Hendricks to move ordinance Number 9.136.4 to April 19th, 2021. The item number 6B, ordinance Number 5.59.2 on second reading, a bill for an ordinance to amend Chapter 6.01 and 6.03 of the Parker Municipal Code Concerning Noise Regulations. Jamie Nguyen?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members. We are here to discuss with you the second reading of the noise regulations in our municipal code and the amendments regarding the same. We have had numerous discussions in front of this council, and we have made multiple changes. I am happy to address the changes that we've made since first reading. We did discuss those in study session a couple of weeks ago. We removed the specific residential references in the current noise ordinance. Beyond that, we still have commercial mixed-use areas, we have the greater downtown district, and we have commercial areas that have a development permit with respect to outdoor sound systems. Those were the areas that we are looking at regulating. We have discussed the decibel levels. I'm happy to go through those again if need be, as well as distance measurements for each of those locations. I'm happy to address any questions. I'm happy to do further discussion, although I know we've been before this community and council in multiple meetings regarding this matter.
Great, thanks, Jamie Nguyen. I think that I will start on questions with Cheryl.
All right, we have already got over this today.
Correct.
So my concern, and continued concern, is we asked for residential to be removed. That meant all residential. And what was presented to us is partial. It does not include mixed family with a residential preference, and that is also residential. So it was left out of this last revision, and that's what I'm objecting to.
I understand. We did include mixed-use areas because of the commercial component. That is still included in here. Many of those also include residential. The greater downtown district is also zoned as a mixed-use area, which is part of the reason that that remained in there, so we can deal with the zoning regulations for these areas that have the commercial components we are trying to regulate.
However, we have two categories of mixed use in our zoning codes. One is mixed use primarily focusing on commercial, and the other is mixed use with a residential emphasis. Where does that apply on Main Street?
So we didn't adopt the definitions of the land development ordinance. The noise ordinance creates three categories, and these are based upon areas of the town that have commercial. And if they have residential with commercial, we're defining that as a mixed-use area. So there's three categories that are in here. The greater downtown district, and that's the area of the greater downtown district that is east of Parker Road. As you know, the greater downtown district also goes west of Parker Road. The other category would be commercial. We have a very small commercial area in the town, and that doesn't contain residential. The other category is to pick up those other areas where you have a commercial and multiple family mix. So that would include the greater downtown district located west of Parker Road, and that would include multiple planning areas as a part of planned developments that have a mix of commercial and multiple family. So we picked all of those up. What was excluded, based upon council direction, was the districts that were zoned exclusively residential, and most of those are the single-family detached areas. Examples given to us were Raleigh Downs, Stro Ranch, and that's what was excluded. And John, I don't know if you want to add to what I've just said?
So Jim and council, Councilmember Pogue, I don't have much to add to what Town Attorney Jim Maloney said. He accurately characterizes the definitions and the hierarchy that's in the noise ordinance amendment as to definition of use. They are different and distinct from those definitions found in the land development ordinance because of the nature of the project. What I would say is, it is particularly challenging for mixed-use areas. We don't have a mixed-use zone district, per se, but we have a number of zones, be it greater downtown district or any number of planned zone districts, such as Pine Bluffs, Stro Ranch, Com Park, et cetera, Crown Point, for example, that have, both have in the built condition a mix of residential use, including multifamily and detached, single-family with commercial use, and they allow those uses in the future. It's very difficult to parse those out, and if we did get down to the level of trying to parse out residential uses, in this case, multifamily, in those mixed-use districts, we would essentially be left with nothing to regulate from a use perspective. So we'd be back to zero.
And I think it might help us to understand what the issue is with multiple family. We certainly understood what your issue was with single-family detached residential, where you have a purely residential district, and, but we don't understand what the concern is with multiple family mixed with commercial. What is the concern?
We requested residential. We did not request one category of residential, which is single-family. We requested residential in general, which would normally cover all this. And that's what I'm objecting to, and I've told you that before.
But what we're trying to understand is, why is multiple family an issue when it's part of a commercial district? We're just trying to understand as a practical matter, what's the concern?
It still has its own zoning as residential. It's multifamily residential.
But what is the concern? I mean, I mean, I get.
I'm not going to mandate this noise ordinance when we have not excluded all residential, period. That's where I'm coming from. It's not fair to say, well, you own a single-family home, so you get exclusion from this issue. Yet you own a multifamily home, and you don't get exclusion. I'm not going to go there.
So Jim, can you opine for a moment on what that would, the legal challenges to, if a, if a commercial entity within a zoning were subject to a noise ordinance, and yet a multifamily or a commercial residential were excluded?
So my concern in answering that question is that I think it's better addressed in executive session.
Okay.
I don't want to create a roadmap to the town as a result of any kind of litigation that follows if we make this ordinance so narrow that it only applies to specific businesses within the town. But let me just sort of drill down a little bit more on your concern, Cheryl. If, I understand what you're saying, and if you can take a look at page four of the ordinance, where it talks about the specific prohibitions on time of day. So just so we're clear, do you want to, do you want to make sure that this section does not apply to any residential use, whether it's multiple family or a single-family detached?
Absolutely.
So maybe it's a definitional solution? Because we have to, in my view, we need to include the land area that encompasses mixed use, because within that land area, you're going to have commercial uses. But maybe there's a way to address that through definition, where we can provide that the specific prohibitions contained in 6.03060 would not apply to residences located within a mixed-use area. Would that satisfy you?
When you look at your definitions of land use, you have definite categories for mixed use and mixed use that is preferred residential.
But remember, what we're doing here is, we're not relying upon the definition of mixed use based upon districts that exist in the land development ordinance. We have a whole new definition in the noise ordinance. That's why we have under definitions, commercial mixed-use areas.
I don't think that's valid.
Okay.
Okay. Councilmember Hendricks, any comments?
You didn't want to step in this one.
I feel like I'm on Groundhog Day. I know, the deal keeps getting altered. It's like, I think maybe we should have language for when we give the princess and the wookie to the empire next week. I mean, I, no, I think has his written is fine. The purpose of this is to address noise issues in commercial space, and if there's multi-dwellings in the commercial space, that applies. If we have to go to an executive session for definition, I guess that's fine, but I want to beat my head on this desk because it's more appropriate for me right now. That's it.
Councilmember Diak?
Um.
So I, I don't think we're going to solve this because we need four. So I mean, would, would an appropriate motion be to kind of continue this to a date uncertain?
Well, I think you have a couple of options. One is you can just vote on the merits of the ordinance before you. The other is that you could certainly continue it to a date uncertain, but that essentially kills it. You could set it for a date certain, and we can have further discussion at the next study session. And there's, there's, there's a lot of different possibilities. You can set it for a date certain after the election, when we have a full council.
John, any further comments?
Uh, no, I'm just, I'm mulling. Thank you. I'm concluded as of now. Appreciate it, Mayor.
Councilmember Hefta?
Well, a couple things. I was listening intently to the two complaints that we had during public comment, and I would just, that would be the first thing that I would like addressed on how that would potentially in the future impact the noise ordinance. Jamie, can you speak to that?
The only construction component that we have is also in our current noise ordinance. There was not a significant alteration to that, other than discussing the time periods on Fridays and Saturdays and adding the ability of the chief building official to make decisions with respect to construction. But our construction section is just drilling or demolition work is prohibited between the hours of 7:00 p.m. and 7:00 a.m. on weekdays, between the hours of 7:00 p.m. on Fridays and 8:00 a.m. on Saturdays, and between the hours of 7:00 p.m. on Saturdays and 10:00 a.m. on Sundays. 7:00 p.m. on Sunday through 7:00 a.m. on Monday, and before 10:00 a.m. and after 7:00 p.m. on holidays, except for emergency work. And we, that is the only provision with respect to construction noise. Air breaks, or Jake breaks, as they're referred to, is addressed in the model traffic code, and they are generally prohibited within the town. And I know there has been police response and community service officers who have responded to Jake break issues. Beyond that, we don't address that type of construction noise.
Okay, I wanted to clarify that because of the two comments that were made on that. And I'm sure the engineering department will get back to our two speakers this, earlier this evening, on those issues. I think that perhaps at this time, we should probably delay this matter to a date certain and review it at that time.
Thank you, council. Councilmember Dyak, one more go around?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Jim, so you, you had a third option, delaying it till after the election. I know the election is on April 20th. When, when does the, when does the new council get seated?
I think they were, they're going to be sworn in the second meeting in May, so if you want a date certain, I would suggest the first regular meeting in June.
First regular meeting in June?
I think that's June 7th.
June 7th, okay. And, you know, that would be enough time to have them seated, to kind of get them up to speed on this and for us to kind of take care of this.
I believe so, yes.
I think it'd be simpler, simpler to really discuss the language that's here.
Yeah.
Hang on, let, let John finish, and we'll come, we'll come back through.
Yeah, no, so I mean, to me, I just, you know, I think we've kind of been down, down this road a number of times, and, and I think we're just at the point where I'm, I'm comfortable with kind of continuing this, this item. So I mean, to me, I like to make a motion.
Well, hold on, hold on, because we, we need to go to public hearing on this.
Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you. I appreciate it.
Cheryl.
Yeah, you have different language in here in different spots. And you've got commercial mixed-use area. But if you didn't include residential in that, I'd be fine with it. It's the issue of the inclusion of residential in this terminology. You could easily just deal with commercial and be done with it.
So again, that's why I was trying to drill down with you exactly what you were looking for in the ordinance. Is this a definitional issue, or is this something greater? And if it's simply definitional, definitional, we, I think we can address that. And we'd like to bring something back at the next study session to, to at least discuss it further. But in terms of a definitional fix, we would have to include the reference to mixed use. And that's a large part of the town, has zoning, which includes commercial and multiple family. We just can't simply strip out all of the mixed use in the town of Parker, because there's not going to be much left. In fact, half of the greater downtown district is mixed use, and that's the portion that is west of Parker Road. That's all mixed use.
And that's fine.
And you would be taking that out. So that's why I asked the question earlier, is, is what, is it, is your objective to make sure that the specific prohibitions over on page four, section 6.03060 are not applied to multiple family units or users? If that's your objective, then we can modify the definition of commercial mixed use to make it clear that those specific prohibitions do not apply to residential, multiple family units.
That would be fine. The issue is, right now, you've got them all included in mixed use.
Right, but we can't, we can't exclude mixed-use areas, because then, at that point, you've very, really narrowed the scope of, of the land area that's subject to the ordinance.
Just exclude that occupancy.
Todd, do you want one more go around?
No.
Okay. Laura, one more go around before we go? Okay. So I know as, as mayor, I'm, I'm not supposed to make comment, but I, I, I do not follow the logic here. I really don't. There, there is nothing in this noise ordinance that disenfranchises, puts an extra burden on anyone that lives on a multifamily unit within the district. There's not. It doesn't exist. And I think Jamie would concur. I think the chief would concur. There, there is not an onus on those folks for including them in here for what we're trying to do. So with that, I will go to public comment. Danette, if there's anyone?
If you'd like to make a public comment, please raise your hand in Zoom. There are no public comments.
Okay, I'm sorry. We opened it at eight. We'll close it at eight, for the record. Sorry, Danette. And council, I'll, I'll entertain a motion or further comment on this.
Mr. Mayor, I would, I would like to present a motion to council to continue ordinance number 5.592 to a date certain of June 7th, 2021.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay. It's been moved by councilmember Dyak, seconded by councilmember Hendricks, to move this to a date certain of June 7th for a second reading, I presume?
Uh, actually, I think it's, it's probably for a third reading, Jim?
We would call it a second reading.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
Or, or, John, do you want to bring this back to a study session for the new council before we put it on a date?
Um, well, I mean, I think that'll be, I don't think we need to put that in the motion. Is that correct?
Well, I, here's my question, though. Do you want it to come back to a study session of the council, or do you want it to come back to just the vote?
Yeah, no, no. I mean, so I, I think, to me, the reason why we're setting this the first day in June, the first meeting in June, is to have enough time to onboard and to give this information to the new council members. So, I mean, to me, it kind of goes without saying, but I'll, I'll leave it to you guys. Do I need to put that in the motion?
I don't think you need to put it in the motion, and if, if you don't have a date certain for second reading, then you're going to have to start all over again.
Okay.
Okay.
Perfect. Thank you. Moved by councilmember Dyak, seconded by councilmember Hendricks. Chris, do you want me to do a roll call on this?
No, we got it.
What? How are we voting?
I'm just going to hit it.
Say it again.
Three to one.
Um, it wasn't an ordinance. It was a motion on directions, so it passes three to one. Who was the no?
Me.
Okay.
I believe town council and staff wanted to do this more quickly by putting it off to the end.
Okay, okay. We're going to move on to the next one. We're, we're dropping the noesem motion here. Item number C, ordinance number 9.286.2 on second reading, a bill for an ordinance approving the Second Amendment of intergovernmental agreement agents, I'm sorry, intergovernmental agreement between the town of Parker and the Board of County Commissioners on the county of Douglas concerning the Dransfeld extension. Mr. Hudson, I know is on Zoom. Are you present, is he presenting on Zoom? Right, there you are. Good evening, sir.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Uh, Danette, could you please show the first slide?
Just one moment.
Could you go to the next slide, please, Danette? Good evening, Mayor and Council. The town has been contemplating the extension of Dransfeld Road over 20 Mile, south of 20 Mile, over Cherry Creek to Matsumbaka for well over a decade. This is an important component of the area's long-term roadway transportation plan, and there's a portion of this road that is located within unincorporated Douglas County. As you go south in the 20 Mile Dransfeld intersection, the Flat Acres property is unincorporated Douglas County. And they're the rea, one of the big reasons of that is, we need to get a, we need to get Douglas County's participation on this due to floodplain impacts that are going to have to happen with the, this road extension. Next slide, please. This is a vicinity map that was actually from the original IGA from 2019. There's been some changes to it, but I think you get the general idea of the Dransfeld extension, going south in the 20 Mile, 20 Mile Dransfeld intersection, crossing Cherry Creek, tying in at the Salisbury North property. And there'll actually be a real alignment of Matsumbaka Road back to the west of this when we're done. Intent here is to create another north-south connection across Cherry Creek. Twenty, over 20 years ago, the, the need for more connections across Cherry Creek came up in one of our traffic studies. We, we need more. And what happens with the few that we've got, they become very busy, and there's no redundancy in our roadway network. So this is something that helps to create some redundancy for emergency response, but also helps support the development that's going to continue to occur in the area as well. Uh, next slide, please. So the original IGA was approved in June of 2019, and we did an amendment later that year, had to do with changing some of the limits of the floodplain modeling, based on some feedback from a property owner there, the Flat Acres property owner. This is the Second Amendment. It will continue to jointly fund 50/50, the design effort. The first design effort is wrapped up. It was $125,000. We wrapped it up last year. This is 250,000 each, 500,000 total for this next phase of design effort. We're going to continue to use existing consultants, and the end goal of the 2021 design effort is to submit what is known as a conditional letter of map revision, or CLOMER, to FEMA, the Federal Emergency Management Agency. Projects that cross Cherry Creek involve multiple federal entities that we have to get permits from. The impacts that we're going to do, we're going to create with this bridge, anytime we cross Cherry Creek, we have impacts. And, you know, we're, we're going to try and minimize those impacts, but ultimately, when we build a bridge, we choke down the, the floodplain, and we've got to get FEMA's approval on the impacts to that. There's other permits that are as well needed here. We've got a, a jumping mouse permit that we've got to get. There's, um, there's a Corps of Engineers permit. There's multiple permits, but the, the CLOMER is one of the most critical of this project, and getting it submitted this year so that we can continue to design next year and anticipate constructing in 2023 of this project. It's important that we continue this design effort, so there will be a subsequent future IGA amendment in 2022 to, to do the final design with Douglas County, subject to annual appropriations. And then the big-ticket item is going to be the construction that's anticipated for 2023. And that may be another amendment, but it could also be a new IGA, depending on where we go with Douglas County. With that, the next slide, please. Thank you, Danette. You know, an ordinance is required to approve this IGA amendment. Douglas County is looking to approve this, this ordinance is, or excuse me, this IGA is going to them on April 13th, their Board of County Commissioners. And with that, I'll answer any questions that you might have about the project and the intergovernmental agreement amendment.
Great, thank you, Chris. I'll start to my left. Councilmember Dyak.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just more of a comment. One, this, this connection, the Dransfeld extension, was, was something when I came on in 2012 that was in our 10-year plan, but we had absolutely no idea how we were going to achieve this. It was a parallel route to Parker Road. We know with, with the challenges at CDOT, funding for, for projects to maybe address Parker Road are challenging to almost nonexistent, at least here in the near and short term. So with, with that, our, our friends at the county, Douglas County, stepped up and have continued to assist us in the design process, and it's our hope that, that, that assistance continues. So we look forward to pushing this forward so we can get constructing in 2023. Thank you.
Councilmember Hefta?
Yes, I would just like to thank Chris Hudson, as the Deputy Director of Engineering, for continuing to push through on this project. And just also ask, Chris, when is the anticipated end date for this project proposed?
If all goes per plan, we would be under construction in the summer of 2023. It would be a one-construction season. You know, we talked a little bit earlier about why Cottonwood Drive, why has that got such a big carryover? Cottonwood Drive, the feds told us, we couldn't bother the birds. The feds threw all the permits. So until they left, all the babies left their nests, we couldn't go in there and cut down the trees we had to, to build the Cottonwood Drive Bridge. So my hope is that we build this bridge in 2023, and we're done at the end of the summer. But it may be a, depending on what, all the constraints from the permits that we end up having to get from the federal government to build this important roadway. Hopefully, I answered your question, Laura.
Yes, you did. Thank you, Chris.
Anything else, Laura? Councilmember Pogue?
Yeah, thank you, Chris. It's that kind of explanation I was looking for when I asked the previous question on why. So now we have a reason why that was occurring on the Cottonwood Bridge. So, thank you, Chris.
Why, why what was occurring?
That amount of carryover.
Oh, the carryover, for the multi-year.
We did not have a reason. We were just told there's a carryover. Well, why?
Okay. Councilmember Hendricks?
No, I've, I've denied this for a while, too. It's an important transportation project, and I'm excited to see it move forward, so thank you.
Excellent. All right. With that, we will go to public comment on this ordinance 9.286.2 at 8:11. Danette, do we have anyone wishing to make public comment?
There are no public comments.
Great, then we'll close it at 8:11. Council, any further questions, comments? I'll entertain a motion.
I move to approve ordinance number 9.286.2 on second reading.
I second.
Laura, it's been moved by councilmember Hendricks, seconded by councilmember Hefta when the vote comes up. Come on down. And the ordinance passes unanimously. Item number 6D, ordinance number 9.307.1 on second reading, a bill for an ordinance approving the First Amendment to Agreement Regarding Construction of Fee-In-Lue Drainage and Flood Control Improvements for Lemon Gulch upstream of Crowfoot Valley Road, Town of Parker, Agreement Number 20-01.13A, Project Number 107087, by In-Between Urban Drainage and Flood Control District, doing business as Mile High Flood District and the Town of Parker. Mr. Mastah, you have the privilege of having the longest title on here tonight, so.
It was a mouthful, wasn't it? Yes. Well, good evening, Mr. Mayor and Council. This item proposes to amend an intergovernmental agreement between the town and the Mile High Flood District. The purpose of the amendment is to codify the funding and construction of improvements to Lemon Gulch upstream of Crowfoot Valley Road. That is the obligation of the Looking Glass Development. Next slide, please. This project is located on the west side. Oh, I think that's the wrong PowerPoint, Danette.
I'm sorry.
It's okay.
It is.
Mr. Mustah, you have the privilege of having the longest title on here tonight.
It was a mouthful, wasn't it? Yes. Well, good evening, Mr. Mayor and Council. This item proposes to amend an intergovernmental agreement between the town and the Mile High Flood District. The purpose of the amendment is to codify the funding and construction of improvements to Lemon Gulch upstream of Crowfoot Valley Road. That is the obligation of the Looking Glass Development. Next slide, please. This project is located on the west side. Oh, I think that's the wrong PowerPoint, Danette.
I'm sorry.
It's okay.
I got excited for a moment. I thought we were at the end of the meeting.
Do you want me to read the title of your ordinance again, or? Give you, give you five minutes.
I need to take my hint, Alex.
Move faster?
Yeah.
There we go. Thank you. So this project is located on the west side or the upstream side of Crowfoot Valley Road, south of Stro Road, within the Looking Glass Development. There are two major drainageways in this area. One is Lemon Gulch, which is shown in the pink on this slide. It basically parallels Crowfoot Valley Road. The other is a tributary of Lemon Gulch called Brandy Gulch, which is shown in the blue on this slide. It is, it's the obligation of the developer of the Looking Glass property to fund the construction of a master plan drainageway improvements to these streams located on their property. So the improvements are proposed to be fee-in-lue projects, which, as a reminder, are funded 100% by the developer, but they are constructed by the Mile High Flood District with guidance from the town. Because in a fee-in-lue arrangement, the town collects the developer funding through our subdivision process, and IGA is necessary for us to pass that funding through to the flood district so they can construct the improvements. The IGA then, then in turn requires the flood district to actually construct those improvements. The original IGA between the town and the Mile High Flood District was approved in April of 2020. That one codified the funding and the construction of Brandy Gulch, which is currently under construction. This new amendment now proposes to codify the funding for the Lemon Gulch improvements, which are now fully designed and nearing permitting. Next slide, please. Just a few details about the project. The design of Lemon Gulch was, again, coordinated with the dendritic design principles that were used in the design of the adjacent development, which essentially means that we try to utilize as much of the natural topography as, as much as we can to eliminate and minimize the impacts to the adjacent landscape. We will have some grade control structures in the gulch to provide a long-term, stable grade in the bottom. We'll have both boulder cascade drops and then some smaller riffle structures. There'll be limited bank protection around some of the curves in, in the stream. And then this project will also support a trail connection to the regional trail that's being built with the Brandy Gulch, within the Brandy Gulch corridor. And I did include this picture of the Lemon Gulch corridor for Councilmember Poe. You can see how sandy this basin is. So we'll certainly keep a lookout for, I know there's been conversation about quicksand or other things that may have fallen in the creek over time, so we'll make sure we keep an eye out for that stuff as we get into the creek.
I want to know where it is.
And we're looking for the stagecoach still, right?
Yeah. The covered wagon.
Covered wagon, covered wagon.
This slide shows some details on the project budget. Again, this is 100% funded by the developer of the Looking Glass property. So for, for Lemon Gulch only, the construction cost is just under $4.9 million. When you add in the contingencies and construction services, the total for Lemon Gulch is just under $5.4 million. When you add in the, the cost for the Brandy Gulch, which is under construction already, the total cost of developer-funded drainageway improvements for the first segment of Lemon Gulch, or of Looking Glass, is just under $7 million. We're there at 6.9 million, 6.9 million dollars. So a good chunk of money there towards drainageway improvements that we're happy to be able to complete with this project. As I mentioned, Brandy Gulch is under construction currently. We anticipate that being done in the next month or so. Lemon Gulch will be constructed, will begin construction here in the next probably month, two months, depending on permitting and, and funding from the developer. So with that, staff does recommend approval of ordinance number 9.307.1, and I'm happy to answer any questions about the IGA or the project that you have.
Great, thank you, sir. Council, we'll start with, to my right, Councilmember Pogue.
I just have a quick question on this one. Is Mile High Flood District doing all of the construction?
Correct.
We're just being the passer?
Just the drainageway, yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilmember Hendricks?
No, thank you for the presentation.
Councilmember Dyak?
No questions or comments. Thank you, Mayor.
Councilmember Hefta?
No questions.
Great. Then we will go to public comment at 8:17. Danette, if you could advise if we have any public comments?
If you'd like to make a comment, please raise your hand. There are no comments.
Great, then we will close. Public comment at 8:17. Council, any further comments or conversation? Great, then I'll entertain a motion on 9.307.1.
I move to approve ordinance number 9.307.1 on second reading.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilmember Hefta, seconded by Councilmember Dyak. Chris will launch your vote. Thanks, Alex. Item number 6E, ordinance number 1.455.1 on second reading, a bill for an ordinance to amend Section 2.06.030 of the Parker Municipal Code concerning the affidavit of intent for writing candidates for municipal office and canceling election. Mr. Maloney.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. The, the Town of Parker, by charter amendment in 2000, has basically adopted two codes for conducting elections. One is the Uniform Election Code, the other is the Municipal Election Code. And the main reason for the change of the charter in, in 2000 was to move our elections from April to November to allow us to coordinate with the county. So effectively, since 2000, the county's been conducting our elections under the Uniform Election Code. However, as you know, we're going to have a special election in April of this year, April 20th. And because it's not a November election, it can't be coordinated under the Uniform Election Code, so we have to go under the Municipal Election Code. As a part of that, we need to make a modification to our Parker Municipal Code, because under our Parker Municipal Code, we have provisions related to the Municipal Election Code. And this deals with affidavits of intent to run as well as canceling elections. So we currently do have a provision that deals with write-in candidates and the, the related affidavit. And currently, that requires someone to submit their affidavit of intent to run 20 days before the election. This change would bring it in conformance with the changes that were made to the Municipal Election Code after 2000, and we just want to update the code to make it consistent with the Municipal Election Code in the event we ever have to hold another municipal election outside of the month of November. So it would go from 20 days to 64 days, and it also provides if there are no more candidates than offices to be filled by an election, that the town clerk gets to cancel the election. So that's it. It's just, again, be consistent with the Municipal Election Code.
Excellent. Thanks, sir. Council questions? I'll start with, to my left, Councilmember Hefta.
No, I just want to thank Jim and the legal department for updating the code and, you know, helping us get through this next special election on April 20th, 2021. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Councilmember Dyak?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. No questions or comments.
Councilmember Pogue?
No questions.
Councilmember Hendricks?
Nothing.
We'll see if the public has anything to weigh in on this at 8:20. Danette?
There are no public comments.
Cast. 8:21, and we'll close it. How about that for at least one minute worth? Council, any comments, questions? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
I move to approve ordinance number 1.455.1 on second reading.
I'll second.
Great. It's been moved by Councilmember Dyak, seconded by Councilmember Hendricks. Your vote should be coming up. And the ordinance passes unanimously. Item number 6F, ordinance number 9.320.1 on second reading, a bill for an ordinance to approve the amended and restated intergovernmental agent, sorry, intergovernmental agreement by In-Between the Board of County Commissioners of Douglas County, the Town of Castle Rock, the Town of Parker, the City of Lone Tree, the City of Castle Pines, and the Town of Larkspur concerning local governmental distribution under the CARES Act. Mr. Maloney.
Mayor and Council, on August 25th of 2020, the Town of Parker, together with Douglas County, Castle Rock, Lone Tree, Castle Pines, and Larkspur entered into an intergovernmental agreement concerning the distribution of funds under the CARES Act. That initial agreement is going to expire on June 30 of this year. So Douglas County put together an amended, restated agreement to have this agreement continue through June 30, 2021. As you know, there's going to be additional funding under the act that was just approved this year, 2 point, was it 2.1 trillion dollars or 1.9 trillion dollars? And so we're going to get some of those funds. We're not sure what vehicle's going to be used for the distribution of those funds. In fact, we're going to talk to you about that in more detail at the next executive session. But in the meantime, all the jurisdictions have agreed, at least moving forward, to extend the initial term from June 30, 2021, to June, I'm sorry, to June 30, 2021.
Excellent. Thank you, Jim. Council questions? Councilmember Pogue?
Is that going to be long enough? Or are we going to have to do this again?
I, I think that will be long enough. And again, Douglas County is spearheading this, and this is at least the draft that they've put together for all the jurisdictions to consider, but I, I think it'll be ample time.
All right, thank you.
Councilmember Hendricks? Councilmember Dyak?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. No questions or comments.
Councilmember Hefta?
None, thank you.
All right, we'll go to public comment at 8:23.
If you'd like to make a comment, please raise your hand. No public comments.
See, and then we'll close at 8:23. Council, any more comments, questions, or I'll entertain a motion?
I move to approve ordinance number 9.320.1 on second reading.
I second.
Motion was made by Councilmember Hendricks, seconded by Councilmember Hefta. Please vote when prompted to do so. And the ordinance passes unanimously. Item number 7, Resolutions. Resolution number 21-017, a resolution to amend Resolution Number 20-028.1, series of 2020, concerning the adoption of the development-related user fee schedule and administrative co-fee schedule. This is Bryce Matthews and Alex Mustah.
Thank you again, Mr. Mayor. So again, as we spoke at study session a few weeks back, we have for your consideration tonight some proposed revisions to the town's development fee schedule. Just some quick background on what the fee schedule is. The schedule sets forth fees that are paid by developers to the town for services that we provide associated with their development applications, so things like reviews and inspections. The town's current development fee schedule was adopted by Town Council last June. It was a product of a user fee study the town performed with a national consultant named Tishler Bice. And essentially, the town hadn't updated their fee schedule for some time, so that, that study, the result of that study was for us to update our fees to better reflect the costs that we actually incur in processing development applications. So the revisions we have for your consideration tonight are pretty narrow in scope. We're not proposing to modify any of the existing fees currently listed. We do have three new fees that we would like to add to the schedule. One is an inspection surcharge fee from the engineering department, and the planning department would also like to add two new fees for waiver or extension applications and then for plaque corrections. So to start with the inspection surcharge fee, this is related to the town's inspection of public infrastructure that is constructed by developers. So the majority of infrastructure in the town is actually constructed by developers with their projects. So in order to ensure that these items are constructed properly in accordance with town standards and criteria, the town does have two inspectors who actually oversee the construction of all this public infrastructure. Our inspectors were very busy throughout 2020, even with COVID affecting many, many areas of the economy, many industries. The construction industry was largely unaffected, especially with civil and roadway construction. So the developers stayed very active in the town, and we had several large development projects that constructed major infrastructure in the town. As we look back on last year and at the year ahead in 2021, we anticipate there'll be even more construction within the town of public infrastructure like that. So our inspection staff is likely to need some assistance in order to effectively inspect all of that, inspect, all that infrastructure that we think may be constructed next year. So with that kind of as a backdrop, an inspection surcharge fee is being proposed to provide the developer funds that we would need to hire a consultant inspector to supplement our inspection staff for the 2021 construction season. This additional fee would be necessary because the town's standard fees were calculated based on the cost of town staff conducting these inspections. So using a consultant introduces a little bit more cost that we would need to cover with this fee. So we anticipate this consultant would generally be needed full-time through the construction season, but we would hire them through an on-call contract. So that would give us the flexibility to pare back hours or change the work hours if the projects don't materialize the way we think they may. The fee is proposed as basically a 27% surcharge that would be added to our standard inspection fee schedule. So this would equate to somewhere between $3,000 to $6,000 for one of our typical single-family subdivisions. You know, obviously, more for bigger projects are going to have more infrastructure, less for smaller projects. In the grand scheme of, you know, the, the overall budget of a project like that, this is a relatively small fee, again, in the overall project. So when we combine this revenue we anticipate generating with this new fee with what we call the excess in the standard inspection fees that we anticipate to collect, we anticipate that to generate the funds we would need to hire a consultant inspector. And what I mean by the excess in the standard fees is that we anticipate collecting standard inspection fees for more projects than we can inspect with our town staff. So what that means essentially is there'll be some excess revenue that's not, that's beyond what we can account for with our town inspectors. So to be fair, we accounted for that when we calculated the additional fee that we needed, the additional revenue we needed to generate with the surplus fee. A couple other notes on the fee, you know, we would like to apply this evenly proportionally to all projects that need engineering inspections. The consultant's efforts will probably be focused on a few of our bigger projects for efficiency's sake, but we don't want to make those projects bury the full brunt of that fee. So we would propose to apply it evenly to all projects, all proportionally to all projects that need engineering inspection to fairly distribute that burden. And then, of course, we would commit to coming back and revisiting this prior to next year to see if, first of all, we still need inspection assistance based on our anticipated projects in 2022, and if we do, if this is still the best way to approach it. We did, we did submit this proposed revision to the town's Developer Liaison Committee, the DLC, to get any feedback or comments that they had. We did not receive any comments in opposition of these surcharge fees. Thank you. And then, as I mentioned, Bryce Matthews and the planning department also have a couple of additional planning fees they would like to add to the fee schedule. These fees were not included in the original fee schedule from last year because they've traditionally been very seldom used by developers. However, over the last year, particularly with COVID creating some uncertainty with some of these projects, we have seen an uptick in some of these application types, specifically the extension request. So planning staff would like the opportunity to be able to recover their time they spend on those applications. So fees of $104 for waiver extension requests and then $50 for plaque corrections are proposed by the planning department. We did not receive any comments from the DLC about these fees either. So with that, staff does recommend approval of the resolution, and myself and Bryce are here to answer any questions you have about that.
Excellent. Thanks, sir. I will start to my right with Councilmember Hendricks, and I think some of your questions were answered, isn't it?
Yes, they were. I was curious about the comments from DLC, and they're answered, and everything else looks good to me, so thank you.
Councilmember Pogue?
One of the ways to handle this is not hiring consultants, not increasing workload, but reducing the number of plat and plan acceptance that the town accepts. Has that been discussed?
Not at the engineering level. I mean, I think that's a larger policy question that, is that fair to say?
Okay.
That's not something that staff would be addressing that would be a council policy discussion.
Yeah, but it hasn't been brought to us. That's why I'm asking about it.
Right.
Correct.
Councilmember Dyak?
No, I mean, Councilmember Hendricks kind of took my comment about the DLC. Appreciate you reaching out to them. So thank you so much. That's it.
Councilmember Hefta?
Once again, I want to thank Alex and the engineering department for putting this together. You know, we have two, as you stated, Trails at Crowfoot and Anthology that are putting a great deal of stress on our current inspectors. Is that right?
Yeah, so there are the larger projects that you mentioned, Looking Glass as well, that are constructing a lot of major infrastructure. But if it was just those projects alone, we probably would be okay, but it's all the other things our inspectors do. There's, there's stuff up in, in Cottonwood Highlands and Com Park going on. There's the right-of-way permits we're chasing around, so it's having all the other projects, the smaller commercial projects that also they have to pay attention to in addition to those larger things. And then now we have Com Park Village South and a couple other larger ones coming online for 2021, and then along with second segments of Looking Glass, Trails of Crowfoot, Anthology. So it's kind of everything cumulatively that we think is going to cause the excessive workload in '21.
And when was the last time that the fees were updated?
So last year, in June of 2020, was when we approved, when council approved the current fee schedule. Before that, it had been many years. I don't, I don't know.
20 years.
So this would be the second change in 20 years?
Yeah, that's correct.
It seems reasonable under the circumstances to increase the fees, as you stated, because there is not only the new development, but then the existing development. And I think to not be charging for at least five hours' worth of staff time on a particular extension or waiver or plat is probably, in a way, shortchanging the town's effort in this regard. And sometimes if you don't deal with being charged on an hourly wage or hourly time, you don't, you don't think about that. But when you have to spend excessive time per hour on one application, and then you haven't captured that charge for the town, it does become an issue. And so I think what you're doing now is you're capturing those charges, you're capturing[1794.63] so I think what you're doing now is you're capturing those charges, you're capturing the effort, and you've also analyzed that it is needed. So I just want to thank you on putting this information together for us.
Great. Thank you, Laura. Danette, we will open up public comment at 8:33 and see if anyone wants to weigh in on this resolution.
There are no public comments.
We'll close public comment at 8:33. And Counsel, any other comments, questions on this resolution? If not, entertain a motion.
I move to approve Resolution Number 21-017.
I second.
It's been moved by Councilmember Hendricks, seconded by Councilmember Hefta. And the resolution passes unanimously. With no other business before the Parker Town Council, I will entertain a motion to adjourn at 8:34.
I move to adjourn.
I'll second.
All right. It's been moved by Councilmember Hefta, seconded by Councilmember Hendricks. When your vote comes up, you get to go home. We stand adjourned at 8:34.